G'da tato, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to councillors, to staff, to the media and to the public. Our opening prayer today will be given by Father Mark Chamberlain of one of the university chaplains. Welcome.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the work and the effort you do for our city and especially for those individuals and families who struggle with having enough money to get food and housing, that those efforts are so important. As we gather in this place, we are mindful of our mountains, our rivers, our bush and the sea that surrounds this land we name as home. We're mindful of those who have gone before us and those who have inspired us and we carry them in our hearts. And we are mindful of you and whom we live and move and have our being. And we ask your blessing on our deliberations this afternoon. We make our prayer through Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Okay councillors, we have a number of apologies. We have apologies from councillor Lord and councillor Hall for lateness. Oh yeah, yeah. And councillor Wilson will join us by audio link later on in the meeting. So I'll move that those apologies be accepted, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, carried. Now, to the confirmation of the agenda, I will move that the agenda be as follows. We will appear most of public forum for the next hour and then we will go into non-public during which we have a non-public submission to public forum and we will then continue with the non-public items, broken by an adjournment for a planned press conference, media conference, but we will come back into non-public, finish that off and then resume the public part of the agenda as published. So I'll move that. Councillor Staines, councillor Vandis.
Are we on number four, confirmation of the agenda currently? Because it's not in the order paper yet.
Sorry, are we on the...
We're on item four, confirmation of agenda.
Yes.
Because according to the order paper, we're supposed to get all the forum stuff done and apologies, Portobello Road widening, all that done first.
We're going to do public forum now.
Right, but my point is that according to the agenda paper, I just want to confirm that we are at, on number four at the moment, confirmation of agenda.
I'm not quite sure. The reason that I explained it verbally was that it differs from what's on the paper. That's why I've moved what I explained verbally.
Okay, well, is now then the appropriate time for me to move that we delay looking at the Deloitte report, 43 pages, on the grounds that we really haven't had time to look at it properly?
Well, you can vote again. I've moved that the agenda be as I explained and you can vote against that, that's what's appropriate.
Can I? If you don't agree with that? Is it a procedural motion that we strike consideration of the Deloitte report today on the basis that there hasn't been enough time to...
Fair enough. But I've moved the agenda be confirmed. We will have that vote and if... I'll take advice on... Councillor, I wonder if you could just give us some advice on the process of... That's fine.
Yes, so my understanding was that a procedural motion needs to be voted on immediately.
There's already a motion in front of the council and I'll proceed with that first. That's, as I understand it, that's the advice I've been given. Yep, okay. So I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
No, record it please.
Just record councillor Vandis. The declaration of interest is for noting and public forum. So can I invite Irene Mosley? That's what I asked her, if we were doing a public forum and he said yes.
The next five minutes are yours. Thank you, thank you Mia-Carell. Councillors, visitors, yes. Thank you for the opportunity to come along and report back on where we're at, just over 12 months from when we presented here last. I'd like to acknowledge the work that's been done both by our trust and the council staff and also the support that we've had from a number of councillors just in their role as spokespeople for the city. I emailed you about an hour ago, a background document. I just thought it would be helpful for you to have that on your iPads. I'm not going to go through it all because I'm aware we've only got five minutes. But it just gives you a bit of a synopsis right back to 2009 when this project started, which was before I got involved. I've only been involved since 2014. So over that time, there's been a number of motions and meetings that have helped move this forward to where we are now and I'm really keen to pick it up, sort of what's happened in the last 12 months and where we're heading from here. So in November last year, we were asked to go away and do some more work with council staff and during that time, we found there was still some concern around the site A that had been a council staff recommendation, but we've now had more time to look at that and we had some concerns around regional council saying they couldn't support site A as it stood and we're now working with them to see what they would need to see to mitigate the concerns they had around the fact that site A by the pool, existing pool, is near the floodbank area. So through the course of the year, it's given us a lot more time to talk to different stakeholders and the problem really that we've got is there isn't a perfect site. And if I could have the second slide up please, maybe if we could make it go PowerPoint. Can we have it just... Can you click on the from the beginning so that it takes up the whole screen, please? Oh, okay, that's fine. So when we look at this slide of Moskew, it's just a Google Earth map, you can see some of the problem that we've got because basically there's not much green space in Moskew and that's one concern some people do have that wherever we put this, we are either about to lose. If we go with either site A or B that I'm going to show you, we are either going to lose green sports space or green garden space. In the course of the project, over the last four or five years, we've looked at Brooklands Park. It's hard for you to see, sorry. The grey line right up the middle is Gordon Road, just to give you an idea of direction. And I've marked the park and Factory Road on there. So the areas we're looking at around the park, so if we go into the next slide. Thank you. This one shows existing pool which we've been calling site A, the alternative site we're looking at behind the athletics club site B and it also shows the sites C and D which we discounted last year as part of the steering committee research based on the fact that site D would have put the pool very close to the houses on Gordon Road with no, not even a roadway barrier between them and site C was similar, there would have been loss of green space for extra parking there. If we go on to the next one, please. So what we've done, we met with Ruth Stokes and her team on 22nd of November to discuss what we sort of do now and we've decided that really we need to go back to the community and explain to them there's no perfect site, both site A and site B would be okay, but there will be, have been to be some give and take. So what we've put together today for you and will go public tomorrow is just a footprint using the concept designs that we have had drawn up in the past, looking at what a pool of the size that we're talking about would look like on those two existing sites. We're also working on some renderings so that people will be able to get an artist's impression, to get some dimension. I know it's only the footprint, but we felt it was important to try and get this out over the summer. We're not going to do this consultation in a hurry. We've, I know from past experience, people have felt like it's either been rushed or it's been pointed. So what we're going to do is tomorrow, we will have a text number. People can text their thoughts. We're not asking any questions at all. We're just saying, here's two sites that we think could work. We want to know what you think about this. We're hoping to be able to have a drop-in centre in late January, February, somewhere on the main street of Moskew that people can call in. We'll have it manned and they can talk and ask questions. We'll also have access through our website and Facebook and we just want to hear what the public think. The text messages will go onto a spreadsheet so that we can, you know, just get people's thoughts. And then by the end of February, we will pig out the fields in both places for the party on the plane so that people can see what it's going to look like as far as actual size. And then in March, all that information will be given to council staff and it'll be their job to come back to you as councillors with what the next steps could be. Just quickly on the fundraising, so, because I know that's something you're going to want to know about as well. On the last page, I've put some information in there. Fundraising is a science, but we also need a site before we can really get started. We've taken the move that we are going to launch the major fundraising campaign from the 12th of February with the High Cup Saddle Hill. It's symbolic, it's going to be tough, then we'll get to the top. I'm happy to sit down with any of you individually and discuss in more detail, but fundraising is also a private thing. I'm not trying to hide anything, I'll tell you anything I can, but not in the public forum. Yes, definitely.
Questions, councillor Vandis.
Thank you Irene. You said you wanted to get the people's thoughts on A or B. My understanding is that people's thoughts were already well canvassed and that submissions were very heavily in favour, in fact 127 of them for site A and only 17 for site B. Given that the public have already voiced a very strong preference for site A, why would you want to go out and do that exercise again? Did the public give you the wrong answer?
No, not at all and I think, was there 180 submissions? Yeah, there was 180 submissions in that round, around about, I know it was under 200. The concern that we've got and I've got is around getting clear guidance from regional council. We need a plan B. It may be that site A would be the best, but if we can't mitigate what they're saying concerns for them around site A, we need to have that site B. Also, the site B at the time, that was a bit further down the field as well. But it's, we just want to get it right and so we're going to go back. It was too big for council staff and us to make a recommendation, so it's, we're being cautious.
If you can't get the ORC to mitigate site A, then you've only got site B. So again, what's the point of consulting when it's the ORC that will make the decision rather than pretending to get the citizens to make it?
Yep. The reason for doing it is because it's important enough that the city need to know exactly what we're thinking. So I want to go out there and show all the information that we've got. I mean, the decision's not going to be mine, it's not going to be one person alone, but I think even for the fundraising, we've got to make sure that people are fully advised and we've had some criticism in the past, so we're trying to be really transparent about what we're doing.
So if the decision essentially is made by the ORC, then shouldn't you wait for the ORC mitigation issues before you go to the public so that you know what they're considering?
No, we're working in partnership with them at the moment and it is manageable, but the other thing, well, it's looking like it's manageable, but the other thing we need to be aware of is the dollar figures. If what they come up with is going to cost huge amounts of money, we need to be looking somewhere else. But also the fact that neither site is perfect. Our trust just wants to make sure the public know what could be going on.
Okay, moving on to another thing you said just now, which surprised me. You said that you need a site confirmed before you can get started on fundraising. My understanding was that we gave you $50,000 to kick funding off a very long time ago now. Are you saying that nothing's been done? Is that 50 grand just still sitting in the bank somewhere?
That's correct, the $50,000 is collecting interest in the bank. We have been doing a lot of groundwork and I mentioned that on page nine and here's some of the things we're doing. It's not around the ability to fundraise as in personal asks, which is how capital fundraising campaign is about being... People are coming to us saying, show us this site and we'll show you the money. So it's just, well, we can do a certain amount and I've talked to the different funding bodies and we're in discussion and all that sort of things happening. But to get the large personal asks, they need to know exactly what they're giving to and that's why I've said that today.
Do you know finally how long it is going to take for the regional council to decide whether or not the issues on site A can be mitigated?
Before Irene answers that, councillor Vandis, I'd have to point out that the ORC is only one aspect of site A. The other aspect, of course, is the adjoining caravan park, which is in lease by the council and the proposed site impacts on that as well. So there are more than one activities that need to be worked through carefully before the final decision is made.
Just on that, haven't the other aspects already been dealt through with the first lot of submissions which showed 127 for site A and only 17 for site B?
Other issues such as what?
The caravan park you just mentioned.
No, I don't believe that's been the case. It has been talked about and mentioned, but we have no process agreed to at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrie.
Irene, what is the feeling in the Moskew community over this at the moment? Are they, is there frustration? Are they happy to see things are slowly ticking over? What is the feeling?
The feedback I've had since we've had the articles in the paper in the last couple of weeks is they're really excited that it looks like things are moving. You know, they'd had a sense that maybe they were stalling, but, you know, they weren't. It's just everything takes a long time, it's something on this scale particularly. And so, yeah, I've had lots of positive feedback. I've met with a couple of people who aren't happy about it and had discussions with them and, you know, they're happy with, we have mutual respect for each other. So it's been positive and people want to see this happen. They're glad that by the end of summer, we might have some idea. They're keen to have a say and sort of put their hand up again. And there's a lot of people keen to fundraise and this week alone, I've had three people contact me wanting to run fundraisers for the project.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Our next visitor is Paul Pope, chairperson of the Taga Peninsula Community Board, wants to speak to us on the future Tomahawk school site, welcome.
Right. Thank you worship and thank you councillors. I'm not going to take up too much of your time, only to say that the issue around the Tomahawk school has taken a considerable amount of time since it was first actually purchased, or since the school was first actually closed way back in 2010. And so there has been quite a degree of anxiety amongst the community over this particular, use of this particular asset when it was purchased by council. And unfortunately, as I say, the community really have been shut out of the building for quite some time, at least three years. I'm pleased to say though that staff have done an excellent job of the expression of interest process and a process that has actually been able to engage with the community well. And the report that you see in front of you is actually a product of that process and one that, as I say, the community have fully engaged with. So without taking up too much more of your time, as I say, just to, as chairman of the community board and as a representative for this area, just to say that we are pleased to see this report arrive today. Thank you.
Have you any questions?
Yes.
Any questions councillors?
Just councillor Bix, are you able to tell us as the board discussed the options presented to us and is it support or ab one or ab two?
The board have discussed this in a broad way and, but actually what we've discussed most in detail is actually, as I say, the use of the building by the kindergarten association along with the demolition of the pool. We haven't gone into detail of each in particular, we have gone to the main one.
Thank you Paul.
Cheers.
Right, our next submitters are from the Aramwana Pilots' Wharf Restoration Trust. Can I invite John, Andrew and Tracey?
Good afternoon councillors, it's nice to be back. Congratulations to you all. And to my right, Tracey Denson, who is a trustee on the Aramwana Wharf Restoration Trust and I should also say Tracey's got quite an in-depth knowledge in the construction industry. And on my left, John Davis, who is chairman of the Aramwana League, who's got an in-depth knowledge of harbour activities in general. You have three pieces of paper in front of you, or one, one single sheet which is some suggested, three suggested recommendations and then a stapled, three pieces of paper staple section. Front page is just a photo of the Aramwana Wharf. Second page is the report that council considered last year, 2015. And the third page is a supporting letter from the chair of the West Harbour Community Board, Steve Walker. So essentially the reason why we're here today is that you're considering, considering the recommendation from DCC staff to demolish the historic Aramwana Wharf. The recommendation, in our view, creates a no-win, lose-lose outcome for the local and the wider community. The facts are that the council has owned this community asset since 1989. Its current condition is not the community's fault. However, the very people who have committed to council's request from last year's Community and Environment Committee meeting on the 8th of June 2015 are hugely disadvantaged. And I'm not pointing the finger at anyone in this room or any staff member, it's just the reality. That's just the other facts. So firstly, starting from scratch, this will cost the council and the community more to rebuild and as the report talks about, $40,000 cost to demolish in our view is questionable, that amount. And more importantly, the plant and equipment required is the same plant and equipment that you require to actually rescue and restore the wharf. Another important aspect is having a wharf removed and rebuilt at separate times creates a greater impact on the environment and Tracey and John will touch on that in a moment. And it also creates a greater health and safety risk. So if you follow the path set out in the report, we believe from a governance view or governance point of view, this pathway is flawed. We understand DCC will require to submit an application to the Department of Conservation for a concession to demolish the structure also. DCC will need to adhere to the ORC's Regional Plan Coast clause 8.5.3.1 A to F and that also includes a written notice from the ORC. All these steps are time-consuming as well, it can't be done tomorrow. In the brief time we have had this report since late last week, we have sought advice from marine professionals and experts in the health and safety field. We believe that the health and safety concerns raised in the report can be overcome and we request that the Aramwana Pilots' Wharf report lie on the table until these next steps are implemented or achieved. So I'll now hand over to Trace.
So our first suggested recommendation is we're asking council that item eight lie on the table until the next Community Development Committee meeting. Our second suggested recommendation is that council does not approve the removal of the Aramwana Wharf due to the risk posed to public health and safety, that the council approves the restoration proposal as tabled at the Community and Environment Committee meeting dated the 8th of June 2015. We received just a support in principle and approval 13 to 1 to rescue and restore the wharf. So 18 months ago, part of our partnership was mapped out on that report and we feel we have kept our side of the bargain. See next steps on note 12, which is document two. So our recommendation, we're against the removal of the Aramwana Wharf. The trust is asking DCC to put in a concession application to DOC as soon as possible. Cost approximately $1,200 for us to proceed with the restoration, which includes removal and re-establishing, rebuilding of the new wharf within the existing footprint. The advantage of that, at the end of this, is we get to retain a historical restored harbour asset for current and future generations. You, the DCC, are asking to put in also the same application to DOC for the same amount but to demolish the wharf at an estimate of $40,000 and to apply to other stakeholders for consents, you may need to demolish a harbour structure. We are asking DCC to apply for the DOC concession. DOC either say yes or no to the concession. If yes, we proceed with restoration, if no, then game over. But until the concession is applied for, we won't know. Maintenance cost, due to the new components in the structure, this would be at a minimum cost for the next 20 years, we've been advised. Health and safety, due to the MWH report dated the 6th to 7th 16. And regards to safety, republic access to the structure, there is great signage for boats and this has been adhered to. By FOT, MWH reported the access walkway and its supporting piles, although deteriorated, appears to be relatively sound. And later say, however, the barrier appears to be relatively easy to bypass. Well, DCC put the plywood barrier up and signage, so we asked the DCC to upgrade this to prevent that public access. So if it's not easy to bypass, there's no danger to public unless they get on it. We've offered DCC council staff to help with this some months ago. We acknowledge the MWH report, key conclusion is that the wharf remains in a very dangerous condition as reported in 2012 and as we know, as reported in 2012. So structurally, it's of the same condition, just less deteriorated. The MWH report recommends that in the interest of public safety, this structure must be removed or rehabilitated to remove the danger it presents, which is exactly what the trust are trying to do, rehabilitate, restore the good reputation of. And we have been trying to do this now for some years. There is no more risk than that was before the legislation changed. So the estimated demolition cost, we've had brief talks with an experienced marine contractor and he has advised us that the Aramwana Wharf removal costing of $40,000 could be underestimated. He advised that demolition of the structure would have more impact on the environment and seabed than restoration would. The financial impact for the DCC would be far cheaper in the way of restoring as the existing piles would not have to be removed in whole, so less effect to seabed and cost involved with doing this, re-underwater, chainsawing etc. Thank you.
Sure. Questions councillors? Councillor Newell.
Thank you very much for your passion again. Just have you any indication from DOC as to which way they will go with the concession?
All the way through, sat on the fence, the continually with DCC staff going back from 2012 onwards have always said, we will wait till the application. They've said that in writing, so they're a good fence at us.
Can I just add, they have a regulatory authority to issue a concession, so they're reluctant to, I suppose, show their cards until the process has actually been complete, to hear all the evidence.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrie.
Do you have any idea in the work you've done to date of how the area would change if the wharf was removed?
Yeah, well, there would be no wharf there, but... You'll have a blank by the beach as against the lovely wharf that's there now.
Do you think there would be any form of erosion or anything along that?
No, no, no change at all.
Councillor O'Malley?
Thanks very much for coming today. Um, in the stuff you gave us, the next step, bullet point number two, access occupation and construction, consists of a negotiation between DCC, DOC and Aramwana League. To what extent has the, um, interaction between the DCC and the Aramwana League been? Have you, have you been satisfied with the interaction you've had or?
Look, it's, it's-
We've worked along, along the way with the, um, with DCC staff, yes.
So are you waiting on the concession? Sorry. Are you waiting, is this, that is the roadblock, isn't it, concession?
Yeah. Since the, um, June report, basically, we've been working with DCC staff, um, and we're just waiting for the concession to be put in.
Councillor Garrett?
Thank you all for coming today and your passion and focus on this asset. Um, my question is, if we went with the original, uh, motion, or recommendations, I should say, in, in the report, what specific assistance from council apart from that application to DOC would you be looking for if, if, um, for example, demolition went ahead?
That's a pointed question, I think, but, um, we'll attempt to answer it. Look, I think what we're saying is if you break this into two projects, i.e. demolition, and it's someday in the future, rescue, well, it won't be rescuing anything, we'll be restoring, but we might be using some of the piles that, that will be stored somewhere to rebuild the wharf. The problem being is that the difficulty to start from scratch, Greenfield site, rather than actually having the ability to use some of these piles that are, um, okay, they might be rotten on the, um, visually from above the water, but underneath they're probably quite sound. So to be able to utilise, and I'm not a marine person, but what these people tell us, to be able to utilise, uh, those existing piles will make the process so much easier. So I suppose what we're saying is we're trying to ask the DCC to recognise there is still value in this structure, even though visually, MWH, you saw the photos, it shows clearly it's, it's, um, dilapidated and, um, desperately parts of it need to be removed. But we believe the sound bits will make the second step so much easier. And I think what we're asking is really to recognise that the old structure, parts of the old structure are worth using again, leaving in situ and using to establish the restored wharf.
Councillor Vanus?
It's been said that there's been a potential safety issue since 1989, and that despite a barrier that is still a bit of a safety issue, the barrier needs to be improved. Is there any downside to waiting apart from a slight extension of this very long period of, uh, potential danger?
Yeah. Um, since 1989, the wharf was well used, the pilots used it up to about 2002, even though the port company, uh, might deny that, but I know for a fact that it was used as the pilot wharf well after 1989. If the parties had got together at that time, early 2000s, it would have been restored to a good condition, as a wonderful letter of Mick Rees's said, and I think the date was about 2011. Yes, the city would willingly take it if the port company had handed it over in good working order. We've, we've been fishing off that right up to 2006, 2007, and, and it's in good nick. It's gone downhill since the, as I say, 2007, 2008. So the other part of your question, sorry, was?
Well, the other part was, um, it says here until a determination from the Department of Conservation has been received. How long do you anticipate that process taking? Can you guess?
No, I can't. And, and, um, I think council staff may know how long a, a concession process takes, it may be a month, I don't, I don't know.
But we're talking months rather than years?
Oh, for sure, surely. Um, seemingly it goes, because it's a project that is likely to be more than 10 years old, or lasts more than 10 years, that's what it is, um, it's got to be publicly notified. And of course, that will open up the odd appeal, um, nega, negative voice, if any, but you, you've got to go through the public notification for over 10 years.
So just to summarise, what you're asking for us to do today is actually the very easy thing of just not do anything for a little while?
That's the one, put it on the table. I think that comes later, or one of the recommendation. If you can just give us, get this concession one way or the other. If you're going to demolish, you've still got to do that anyway. We believe, we, we haven't had confirmation, we haven't talked to DOC, because we've been told not to talk to DOC. That's a DCC, it's an owner, asset owner slash DOC responsibility. We're just in the, in the fringes. We're assuming that they will have to apply, the DCC will have to apply for a concession to demolish. They'll have to get permission to get on the beach, all sorts, so.
So you would be happy if later on in this meeting, someone were to move that the report lie on the table, da-da, that the council immediately lodge application with DOC, and that the council request up to arrange additional barriers? That would keep you completely happy if that was successfully moved?
Would be excited.
Thank you.
Councillor Alder?
Given that, um, a lot of it's around health and safety issues, um, I was just wondering, do you, if you were going to restore it, um, have you got any plans or, um, forward plans around the health and safety issues related to that restoration?
Uh, any, any wharf, as you know, there's water around it. Um, a wharf without water ain't much cop. So if you think of all around the harbour, structures are such that, yes, something can happen, but there'll be handrails on the lead in and out, there'll be handrails on the back face. Um, I, I can't see what else.
It'll be built up to marine engineered, um, design, um, which will be following. So to get its, uh, certificate of compliance for the, um, from the ORC, it'll have to be built up to code.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next subminer is, um, Robert Thompson of Spokes, wanted to speak to us about Portobello Road widening. Welcome, Robert. Next five minutes yours.
My name is Robert Thompson, I'm the Chair of Cycling Advocacy Group, Spokes Dunedin. With me today is Tim Vick, he's our Treasurer and Resident Civil Engineer. Uh, we'd like to speak to you today about an issue about, uh, the Peninsula Road Widening, Widening Project that arose, uh, last week. Now, we've been in touch with councillor Wilson about this, um, so I think there's some progress being made there, but it's an issue that we'd like to raise to make sure you're all aware of it. Um, now, because we haven't had a chance to meet many of you that have recently been elected, I just want to take the opportunity to, um, tell you a bit, a little bit about Spokes, just very quickly. Uh, Spokes has been cycling advocacy group in Dunedin since 1996. Our mission statement or motto is basically to make the streets sweet for bikes. Uh, we have roughly 800 members, members, affiliate members and family members. And this, these, these members span the breadth of the cycling community in Dunedin, uh, including commuters, recreational riders, road cyclists and mountain bikers. And many of them fall into multiple categories, such as my, Tim and myself, who are commuters, road riders and mountain bikers. Um, we regularly liaise with, uh, all the other cycling groups in town, including Cycling Otago, Mountain Biking Otago, the Dunedin Triathlon Multi-Sport Club, Dunedin BMX, um, other groups like, uh, Mountain Biking Otago, um, the Social Riders Mountain Biking Otago, uh, Women on Wheels, uh, the Shops Bike Otago, Cycle World, Avanti Plus and Crooked Spoke, and also with researchers at the university. Uh, so to summarise, we are local cyclists, we're passionate about cycling and about Dunedin. Uh, we're knowledgeable about cycling, because we're doing this a long, we've been doing this for a while. And we're also nationally regarded. We, we are regularly contacted by the government or NZTA to contribute as the, uh, cycling representatives for all of Otago and Southland on national cycling related issues. So, uh, just a little bit of background on the Peninsula Road Widening Project, because I, I understand you haven't necessarily been fully briefed on this. Uh, the current state of the Peninsula Road is that it's a winding, narrow road. Uh, there are quite a few crashes, um, that we'd, we'd like to get rid of, alleviate, a lot of cars end up in the harbour. Uh, it's also a major tourist destination, there's a concentration of camper vans. It's also one of the, probably the top recreational cycling route in Dunedin, so there's a large concentration of cyclists on this route as well. And it's very poor pedestrian access. And so this is a major project, it's not just a cycling project. Uh, the objectives are to improve traffic flow and safety for all the users. Uh, and part of that will ease some of the, the tight curves. Uh, and it will also include some amenities, uh, including footpath and a cycleway. And this will allow us to, to further capitalise on the tourism potential of the, uh, Otago Harbour and the Peninsula. So in 2013, a decision was made on the, uh, layout of the road, the widened road, uh, that looks like this picture I used to hear. So if, um, looking at this picture here, the, the harbour would be on the left, then you have the seawall, a little bit of a grass verge, uh, then you have a, a footpath, two metre footpath with some separation, and then a, a three metre bi-directional cycleway, and then a, a hard barrier, and then the traffic lanes. So this solution would completely remove the cyclists from the traffic lanes, uh, would reduce any conflict between the pedestrians and the cyclists. And it's a, this, this we think is the, the ideal solution. So this is the, the layout that was adopted after consultation in 2013. And then in 2014, uh, further consultation was done on the ordering, uh, and in 2015, it was decided to accelerate the entire project. So that would be completed in the 2015, 2018 timeframe. So at this stage, we were kind of thinking, hey, uh, we should be halfway through with construction on this project, uh, so far. Uh, and then last week, we went to a, um, a, a meeting out in Portobello, where we thought it would be a meeting about, uh, details about where the steps were located and, and benches and planting and things like that, uh, only to find that actually... Pen, can we get the next slide? Just click it. Okay, only to find that, uh, the, the layout had been, uh, changed to, uh, something like this, uh, where there is a, a, a shared path and then, uh, cyclists in the road essentially. Now, now this, this layout is essentially what you see through McCandrie Bay, where you've got a shared path and you've got some cycle lanes and the traffic lanes. The problem is that these, these cycle lanes are actually narrower than the lanes that are already there in McCandrie Bay. And in fact, they're, they're 1.2 metres. The minimum standard, the minimum NZTA standard for cycle lanes on a 70 kilometre per hour road is 1.9 metres. So this is far below the minimum NZTA standard for cycle lanes on this kind of road. And for that reason, they're not called cycle lanes, they're just called shoulders. But there's a clear expectation here that the cyclists are meant to cycle in this space that's not even adequate enough to be called a cycle lane. Um, but at the same time, the, uh, the shared path, this three metre shared path is not really, uh, suitable for cycl, for cyclists and pedestrians to use, um, together. And it, it doesn't quite meet the best practice for shared paths, international best practice for shared paths. And the problem here is that in, in workshops or something, you might be, you might be shown a chart, uh, that shows the width of cycled, shared, shared paths depending on the volume of cyclists and pedestrians. The problem is that, uh, the best practice says that when you have a, uh, a, a fall hazard on one side or a continuous bounding on the other side, that you should add an additional 0.5 metres to either edge of the cycling. So for a, for a really adequate shared path, we should be looking at a minimum four metres. Now, so this layout here, we don't feel that this works adequately for the cyclists who are in the road or still sharing the, essentially sharing the carriageway with the cars. It doesn't work well for the motorists who are still trying to get around the cyclists. Uh, and then in, in, in the shared path, it doesn't really work adequately for either the pedestrians or the cyclists, because it's not wide enough. Uh, so we don't feel that this, uh, layout, uh, meets the community expectations or aspirations either. Uh, and it will probably have a significant impact on the, on the tourism potential of using this layout. Now, we recognise that our ideal layout may not be entirely feasible, but we feel that this layout here is totally inadequate for everybody. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So the, the last thing I wanted to mention, if Pen we can get the next slide. Yeah, oh, sorry. There we go. So, uh, this is, this is one of the, uh, the handouts from this meeting. And you see the, the consultancy there, GHD. Uh, this is actually the same consultancy that was responsible for the South Dunedin Cycle Way, uh, Cycle Network sort of fiascos a couple of years ago. Sorry? So I think we need to be looking at this with a very critical eye.
Okay. Questions councillors? Councillor Gary?
Uh, first of all, thank you, Robert. I know the considerable amount of work that you've put on over the years, um, and thank you for your passion. I'm going to refer to this by its proper name, which is the Portobello Harrington Point Road Safety Improvement Project, which has a cycleway as part of it, and a pedestrian area, and now called the Peninsula Connection. My questions are around, was it, uh, would you consider that it would have been a surprise to most of the community that there was a change in layout at this point? That's my first question. And secondly, uh, are you prepared to keep working with council to get a positive acceptable outcome?
Well, um, so we had three representatives attend this meeting last week, myself, Tim and John Dean, our secretary, and it was certainly a surprise to us. Um, and it's, it's been a surprise to other cyclists that we've talked about as well, uh, talked to about it as well. Um, uh, but we would certainly be interested in working constructively and collaboratively with the council to get the best outcome.
Councillor Vanus?
You said we should look at, uh, these, um, distances and widths with a critical eye. Um, do you recognise that in that last slide that you have, that the amount of width given over to vehicles, motorised vehicles, is actually not much more than what was being proposed for pedestrians and cyclists, who would be a fraction of the, uh, number of people parting any one point?
Uh, in the three metre, um, see if we can, maybe we can go back to that previous slide? Two slides back, I think it is?
I mean, you talked about an adequate shared path, a minimum of four metres.
So, that's right. So based on the, uh, the number of users and projected number of users, you might expect a three metre path to be sufficient. But the international best practice recommends that when you have a, a fall hazard on one side, which we have, you can fall into the harbour, uh, or, uh, continuous bounding on the other side, so in other words, the hard curb, uh, into the traffic lane, then you should add an extra 0.5 metres onto either side.
Right. Um, looking at international actual practice as opposed to claimed international best practice, do you recognise that most European countries deal with a conflict between pedestrians and cyclists simply by having them use the same area, uh, with a row of parked cars in between?
That is one solution that can be employed in certain environments, there, there's no parking.
Copenhagen, Berlin, uh, um...
Councillor Vanus, Councillor Vanus, can you just stick to questions? I don't want to, the discussion's going to go too long.
Do you recognise then that it's the solution that's most often used in most Western countries, which simply makes cyclists and pedestrians full of space?
Yeah, it depends on the environment that you're using. So here we're talking about preclamation of five metres, so we have an additional, essentially five metres of space to play with here. And, um...
My question was regarding what's practically used in most Western countries.
We are proposing that we think the better solution would be the cyclists mixed with pedestrians, but we're proposing that what's on the screen isn't the best solution.
Councillor Welling?
So just to get clarification, what you're wanting is you're wanting some sort of hard surface or mound or structure between the cyclists and the roadway?
That's right. We think, I mean, we think that the cyclist should be out of the traffic lane. I think that would be a better solution for the cyclists and for the motorists. And that's what, that's what the, uh, an ideal solution would have the cyclists on a separate space out of the roadway. Now, the question is how, how you mix them with pedestrians is, is a separate question. Um, but this solution is not the ideal solution. Here we've got a, a space where the, the cyclists are, are obviously expected to use the space that's, that's so inadequate that it can't even be called a cycle lane legally.
Councillor Eldon?
If you have the wide one with pedestrian and cycleway, will you have markings as to where?
will you have markings as to where people should be? Because I know sometimes I do bidirectional along the, by the Vauxhall Yacht Club and sometimes I feel a little unsafe coming towards another cyclist. So, yeah, I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, Pen, if we can scroll down, I think to the final slide, I actually have some images about that. Yeah. So we see down here in the bottom left corner is some appropriate road marking that would direct traffic. Basically, we need some traffic management. And that's key to the success of the cycleways, is to have appropriate traffic management. Part of that is the width, to make sure that it can accommodate bidirectional traffic. And that's the functional width. So if you have a drop off on one side, that reduces the function width. So you need to increase the physical width. But you need to have this traffic management as well. Make sure people keep on the left, pass on the right, not obstruct the oncoming lane. And a lot of places have, you know, posted set of expectations or rules.
It's just that two mountain bikes passing actually take quite a bit of room because the handlebars come right out. And so it's actually quite scary.
And then when you have a drop off on one side, that's why you need the extra space.
Thank you.
Our next submitter, the last one for the public part of the meeting, is Ian Paul of New Zealand Police. Wants to talk to us about our agenda right of the alcohol restriction area. Welcome in.
Your worship city councillors, appreciate the opportunity to present the police submissions on the extension to the alcohol restriction area, or liquor ban area as we know it in the police. So essentially, we've had a central city liquor ban or alcohol restricted area since 2004, which has proved to be a valuable tool for police in reducing alcohol harm in the central city. But in that decade or over a decade, the times have changed and the way we drink alcohol has changed. But we haven't changed the area to reflect these changes. So essentially, what the police are asking for is some minor extensions to the liquor ban area, which will encompass a couple of areas where we've noticed a overrepresentation of alcohol harm. So essentially, we're looking at an extension to encompass View Street and above that Tennyson Street. I think the reasons behind that have been pretty well documented in the media over recent years. Would also encompass the Dowling Street steps, which we have noticed are quite a dark and almost dingy area where a lot of people will sit there and drink prior to heading into town. And then above that, the Dowling Street itself. We've also got a couple of car parks in the central city, which are of interest to us. So we have the Countdown Car Park, which is right beside the police station. And that was one of our worst areas in the central city for alcohol harm. Essentially, it was driven by the nearby licensed premises, which has recently closed. But still, we noticed a lot of harm, a lot of people parking up. A lot of out of towners parked their cars there in preload before heading into town. As a consequence, we have disorder and fights. If you head further along Great King Street, we have the Henry's Liquor or New World Car Park, where similar things happen. So the licensee of Henry's can attest to seeing numerous people walking out of his premises and drinking right out front, using the public toilet as a bit of a magnet for people as well, and then heading into town. So what we're presenting is some minor changes to the boundaries, which we believe will have a real impact on alcohol harm in the central city.
Questions, Counselor Daniels?
Thank you very much for that. And good to see that you're recognising some extra areas around the city. I'm wondering if these minor extensions, in proposing them, that you're being responsive to public complaints or more to feedback from police? Or is it a combination?
It's a combination of, certainly. We looked at the statistics and stats wise, we look at calls for service. So we're looking at, those are the calls that are made by the public to the police identifying issues. And we also look at anecdotal evidence from our officers, what are they finding in the central city? So a combination, and that's what we've asked for those areas.
Great. In the report, you say that earlier restriction had led to a reduction in the incidence of alcohol related problems. Have you got some statistics on that that are publicly available? Or something that you could perhaps forward to us later?
I can certainly forward them to you. Yes, yep.
Thank you very much. Counselor Benson.
Thank you, Sergeant Paul, and for your unequivocal support for the minor alterations. Couple of things I wanted to ask about that. The first one is, in the report, you detail the procedures that are followed if someone is in breach of a ban area. Can you confirm that they are warned, told to move, have the opportunity of removing themselves, their vehicle with inappropriate material or their brown paper bag full or box full of whatever it is, before any action is taken against or is that warning procedure that is always followed?
Sure. So we basically have a graduated response to a breach of the liquor ban. So our first thing, we've got to prove that the person knew they were in a liquor ban area. And we do have some issues with the current signage. I'd be led to believe it's a council policy where the signs must be fixed and they're up a pole about three metres, which is reasonably hard to see if you're a modern young person on social media wandering through town looking at your shoes. So some signage on the footpath or something on those lines will go a long way to assisting us to prove they knew they were in a liquor ban area. And then we can engage with the conversation of, did you know you're in a liquor ban area? No, I didn't. Can you tip it out? No problem. The more belligerent that decide, yes, I know I'm in a liquor ban area, and then decide to consume their alcohol in front of us, then face either a $250 and French one knows, or they can be arrested.
Thank you for the first bit of advice. I'll go out with my sense of this evening. The other question is in respect of some of the behaviour associated with complaints. And I don't want to be too specific, but I think we all know of a lot of harassment, either in person or electronically, of people who have complained about inappropriate drinking and partying and antisocial behaviour on the streets. Are you confident that the police have the capacity to follow up when people identify themselves on Facebook or Twitter with threatening messages in such instances?
We certainly do. I mean, we're reasonably stretched and the thin blue line is getting rather thinner. But I don't mean we're fitter, but we're less people on the street. But certainly, this gives us another tool. And it's always proven around the country that liquor bans are a very effective tool. It's not the penicillin, it's not going to stop alcohol harm, full stop. But it gives us a tool to engage in those troublemakers. So when we're at an area that's identified as a problem, it might be a particular backpacker that's turned into a student flat, then we've got some tools to engage in those people that are outside that are causing the offence. And that, of course, gives us some community reassurance for those people that are making those complaints.
Apart from the government underfunding of the police, which you clearly refer to, you are telling me also as part of that, that you believe you have the capacity to follow up complaints where people identify themselves, including photographs on Facebook and Twitter, threatening with threats to people who complain?
We certainly do. And I don't want to discuss the individual place that we're talking about now, but there has been a large amount of police resource put into that particular street.
Counselor Stans. Counselor Alder, please, sir.
Thank you for your submission. I just want to clarify what dialogue you may have entered into potential users of the skater park. I have no issues with the proposed areas, except for the skater park, because I think that that could be construed as the wrong kind of messaging that we want to send to young people. So I just wondered, have you had any dialogue around that?
No, I haven't. But the skate park's been in the liquor ban area since, I think there was a slight amendment just after 2004 when it came in. But it's always been here. And to be perfectly frank, we don't strike a lot of alcohol being consumed here. But it's a pretty good, pretty good area.
Are there questions? Thank you for your submission. Okay, councillors, we have reached the end of the public, public forum.